Okay, let's see. We might have to close it all together. Try it again.
Okay.
Call the Board of Supervisors back to order, March 20th.
Supervisors Frost, Kennedy, Natoli, Serna, Peters.
Here.
And you have a quorum. Item 56 is the 2030 General Plan Annual Report for calendar year 2017.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board. This is a presentation on all the work our long-range planning staff has been doing over the last year. My name is Todd Smith, Principal Planner for the Long Range and Master Plans section. A little bit of background real quick. This is an annual reporting requirement of the general plan. We present this to the Planning Commission, to this board, and ultimately forward this report on to State Office, or excuse me, Department of Housing and Community Development, and the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. It's due on or before April 1st of each year, and it looks like we're going to make that this year. Before I get into the nitty-gritty of the report, I did want to touch on some of the bills from the 2017 housing legislation package. There were 15 in all. I'm not going to go through all of them, just going to highlight the four or five that are on the slide here. I also want to note that we do have an in-house legislation analysis team that is coordinating with the county Executive's Office, the legislative officer there, to make sure that those legislation that are voted on and enacted by the state are carried out in accordance with state law and how we implement the general plan and our various codes. First, SB 166. This one requires some new findings for proposals that build either fewer units or units that are in a different income category than is shown in our housing element. I want to note here that we already have to make findings for some of these projects, but this changes a little bit in the income category, so it's a minor thing, really. SB 35 is a streamlining bill for jurisdictions that are not meeting our regional housing needs allocation. Should be fairly straightforward for us. Want to note there qualifying projects, multifamily projects, are those that have affordability and prevailing wage requirements. AB 1397, this one, we're actually coordinating with SHRA as well as the state HCD to figure out exactly what it means to us. It has to do with certain sites that may not be counted in the next housing element, vacant land inventory. Some of the concerns there are provision of adequate utilities and infrastructure, and then parcel sizing, so parcels that are less than five, excuse me, less than half an acre and greater than 10 acres would be excluded under this bill. The next one, SB, excuse me, SB 167, AB 678, should not be a problem for Sacramento County, but this is more of an FYI. It would require findings when the county would disapprove or condition those housing types specified on the slide, and again, requires a staffed consistency determination. I also want to note here, in 2018, there's already been 271 pieces of legislation introduced. We are monitoring each one of them as they relate to the county's business. Some of those obviously affect other parts of the county than just planning and environmental review, but we're trying to keep track. So now, moving on to the actual annual report. This is Attachment 1 to the staff report, and the content is essentially the major programs and projects that have been accomplished during calendar year 2017. I'm going to highlight the amendments to the general plan that have been approved, go over the three growth strategies that the county has. And the annual report also has a summary of applications received. I'm not going to go into the details of that, but it's there if you're interested. And finally, we're going to touch on our 2018 and 2019 priorities in the long-range planning group. A little bit of trivia here, there are 891 policies in the general plan, 648 implementation measures. I'm not going to go over all of them for you today. Just be aware that there's a lot that we have in the general plan to implement.
How does that compare to other jurisdictions' general plan?
That's a good question. I don't have that trivia. I can get the answer if you're interested.
Okay. I am interested, actually. Not the exact number, but...
You just measure the height of the document.
Yeah, print them all out.
Right. How many volumes? Yeah. So, ongoing projects. We have begun the environmental justice element. This is a state-mandated requirement for jurisdictions that have quote-unquote disadvantaged communities that are defined by the state, Cal EPAs and ViroScreen. We have started Phase 1. In fact, we were just at the Planning Commission a few weeks ago. We've got a recommendation for approval. This will be coming to the Board in early May for Phase 1. Climate Action Plan, this is a requirement of the general plan adoption in 2011. We have completed Phase 1 and Phase 2A. We are now working through Phase 2B, which is a community-wide climate action plan and adaptation plan. We have done some initial outreach internally with different county agencies and departments to make sure we are all in alignment before we begin public-facing outreach, and we started that public-facing outreach in the last couple of weeks. That includes interested parties from all sectors: nonprofits, the Association of Realtors, North State Building Industry Association, some major development interests in the county, some environmental interest groups in the county. So we're trying to hit all of the folks who we believe are interested in that program. The housing element implementation, we have continued to work on implementing that. This is the fifth year of our eight-year planning period, 2013 to 2021. We've developed a much more robust tracking system for our arena allocation. And finally, we have made significant progress on the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan. That should be coming to the Board in the next couple of months, and that actually implements a number of our conservation element policies. This slide is just a quick touch on some of the programs in our housing element that I've already mentioned, the monitoring multifamily parcels, that's ongoing. We do have one policy, or program, rather, in the housing element that speaks to supporting infill development. I do want to toot our long-range planning staff's horn on this one a little bit because there are other, many, excuse me, many policies in other elements, the land use element, economic development element, that speak to infill development. So we've kind of curated a simple list of those infill policies, taken them out of that big binder, and begun a little bit of implementation work with our Office of Economic Development. We have developed two proposals, one through economic development for kind of an on-call broker of sorts who can look at site-specific details, potential constraints from an infrastructure or finance perspective, as well as a broader proposal for our office to deal with potential conflicts internal to the zoning code and the general plan and our design guidelines to see if there are any unintentional impediments to infill in the county. We're beginning that work now, and the second, or third part of that, excuse me, is a more robust inventory of vacant and underutilized land within the county. Grants for infill development, we occasionally, actually pretty frequently, meet with SHRA on a monthly basis and go over some of the infill development that we're both seeing in their shop and our shop. We try to coordinate on potential grants that might be applicable, not just to residential, but also non-residential development. We have done a little bit of conversion of older motels for affordable housing. A recent example is the Courtyard Inn project up in the north part of the county. And finally, we have the housing incentive program. This is a program, we call it HIP, may not be HIP, but it's housing. It includes density bonus provisions for certain design criteria in affordable housing. So we have produced educational materials, provided them to interested parties down in the Building Assistance Center downtown, and also out at Branch Center. We've also been in touch with some high-density building customers to let them know that it's available. This slide is Sacramento County's Regional Housing Needs Allocation. Over the last five years, is the snapshot here, these numbers represent building permits that have been issued. I want to say, the picture looks a little bit grim here. However, this is not unique to Sacramento County. Of the 539 jurisdictions in the state, that includes cities and counties, 13 are meeting their arena obligations, and most of those are in Southern California where they had a very small arena allocation. So this is essentially a statewide issue. There's a number of factors that contribute to this picture.
Could you pause for a moment, Todd?
Sure.
Mr. Serna?
Thank you. Todd, the chart doesn't tell us whether, it says units, but is it units planned, units zoned, units constructed?
This chart is building permits issued for those units. So there has been...
Permits?
Permits issued, yes.
Okay. I think it's a really important distinction to be made, because the law does not require the county to produce the units. We're not in the business of producing units outside of our role as a housing authority when it comes to public housing, but the law is very clear that we are responsible and need to be responsive when it comes to zoning at appropriate densities for various income levels. So just something to keep clear for future charts, it might be a par analytical underneath units, or it might just be permits.
Thank you. I will make note of that.
Thanks.
These are the general plan amendments that have been completed...
I'm sorry, Mr. Natoli had a question.
That's fine. You don't have to go back to the last slide, but just asking on those numbers, so on the, I know on the very low-income housing that the smallest number permits issued in amount of time has transpired thus far, was that covered under the motel conversion, or did that motel conversion fall into the low?
The permits for that one have not been issued yet.
Okay. And are we, again, I know we've talked about this in the past, and certainly there are struggles to, you know, get some of these units, you know, constructed, and a lot of them are done in private sector. I guess I would still encourage, when it comes to some of the motel conversions, again, I have some in District 5 that I think would be good candidates if we could piece the pieces together. I know that Supervisor Peters worked for many years on the courtyard project, but I'd just suggest that if, continue to lag, and I don't know whether sanctions come with some of them falling short in some of those areas, if we need to look at some of those units where you can get 60 or 70 units, and again, there's costs associated with doing that and so forth, I would suggest we might continue to take a look at that avenue, particularly for the low and the very low income categories.
Noted, will do. We have staff from SHRA in the audience who's also taking notes.
Right, thanks.
Thank you. So the general plan amendments on this slide are all county-initiated. Don't need to say much about them, other than, thank you, you all voted on these. The next slide, these are primarily privately initiated, with the exception of Number 4 and Number 6, the land use diagram corrections, that was a cleanup, and then the International Airport, ALUCP, we did that at the end of last year. That's just a summary of general plan amendments that took place last year. Now on to the county's growth strategies. So we have, for history's sake, presented here, in 2011, when the general plan update was adopted, there were roughly 30,000 units that could be accommodated within the existing and planned communities. Those are inside the urban policy area. Five years later, SECOG has a new growth projection of 48,000 units by 2036, and that's just for the unincorporated county. So how do we deal with that? Through the three strategies here, infill, and then the approved growth areas, and then pending master plans, and I'll go through each one. Starting with approved growth areas, this represents not just those projects that were approved at the time the general plan update was adopted in 2011, but those that have been adopted since. So Cordova Hills and within Alberta, with the approval of the Northborough Project, those two combined added roughly 9,000 additional units, bringing us to just a hair under 42,000 units that can be accommodated within approved growth areas. The next slide is the pending master plans. Four of these are in the Jackson Highway Corridor. I'm not going to go into the details of each one here, those are still in progress. And one of those is also up in Natomas, in the unincorporated portion of Natomas. All five of these together, just a little bit over 51,000 dwelling units. The note that I want to emphasize on this slide is that bullet at the bottom, the Affordable Housing Ordinance. So this is one of the tools that we use to produce affordable housing. When the Affordable Housing Ordinance was adopted, or an update to it was adopted in 2014, there were guidelines produced in 2015, the Board's direction to staff, and as reflected in that ordinance, is a requirement that the county spend 50% of the affordable housing fees collected within what are known as large development projects, and those are defined as 750 units or more. So, all of these master plans are large development projects, therefore, through staff's interpretation of that ordinance, we are looking for a way to spend affordable housing fees collected in these master plan areas, and staff is advocating, with coordination with SHRA, that it be a 50-50 split, 50% through land dedication, 50% through affordable housing fees for each master plan. And the reason for that split is fairly simple. We don't want to have an oversupply of land dedication and not enough cash, and we don't want to have too much cash and not enough land dedication. So we're trying to strike a balance there. Finally...
Could you just pause on that slide for a moment, please? Mr. Serna?
Thank you. So on that note, Todd, which I think is an important reminder for all of us about what the thinking was at the time that we did the update in 2014, for, let's just say, the North Natomas precinct, the pending master plan with IS unit count, the fees that would come from market rate residential development within that project, along with land dedication, the combination of those two would be presumably used to meet the intent of the county's total requirement for below-market rate unit production, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And how does the, how does the, how can we reconcile the unit counts noted as pending master plans, and then your previous slide, I think it was called Future Growth Areas, against approved growth areas, against the blueprint? Does the, do the blueprint designations consider, are the, do approved growth areas and the master plan areas nest within the blueprint designation areas?
In some cases, yes, but not in all cases.
Okay.
I'll elaborate a little bit. So the, every four years, SECOG goes through their update to the MTPSES, they're doing that cycle right now, and they ask local jurisdictions for input as far as projections into, for land use and where that occurs, for their modeling for the next MTPSES. So we provide, as staff, we provide an objective perspective to inform them about potential obstacles to completing certain projects. So if there's a lengthy permitting process ahead of a certain project, or if there's substantial off-site infrastructure that might be a financial hurdle to development of a site, we try to inform SECOG staff of those sorts of things. Ultimately, when SECOG staff produces the MTPSES, they are placing units in certain geographies throughout the region, which is not exactly the blueprint, but they are trying to implement blueprint principles through that plan.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm going to wrap up with our work program for the next year. I already mentioned the infill program and what we're trying to accomplish there. With community spotlights, this is something that the Board heard at the January retreat. This is something that we're trying to highlight, the diverse nature of each of Sacramento County's communities. Every one of them has something different and special. You all know that from your constituents. We're trying to view this through a lens of placemaking, trying to emphasize those amenities in each community, what's good about them, what are their assets, what can we build upon there. We think that this spotlight effort might be a good way to identify some potential improvements in certain communities, maybe some identification of infill sites or some sort of revitalization efforts, perhaps, we don't know yet. We've kicked off that with an internal coordination meeting with all the infrastructure providers, as well as some recreation, for example, regional parks is playing a big role in that. The environmental justice element, I already mentioned, is coming to the Board in early May. We will, we are recommending a Phase 2 there, but I'll save that for another day. The climate action plan, I do believe we're going to make progress on that this year. I personally, and my staff personally, wants to make significant progress on that. We will continue to implement the housing element, and we will be keeping a very close eye on all this pending legislation, because it does have significant impacts on how we shape or scope the next housing element, which we will begin doing later this year. The South SAC HCP, again, that's coming to you in the next couple of months, and I'm not even going to try to summarize that body of work, it's significant. Finally, our zoning administration team is doing a lot of proactive zoning code amendments. We do those on a fairly regular basis. In conclusion, we have completed several significant projects to implement the general plan. There's still a tremendous amount of work to do. The actual growth last year and in the years prior remained lower than what was projected annually. Obviously, the supply of land and the infill in approved plan areas can accommodate the most recent 20-year projections. And I already mentioned, the county's progress toward meeting our share arena is falling short. We're trying to figure out ways to achieve more successes there. And ultimately, our goal is this, the strategic work program should be our guide to determine our priorities throughout the next year. Finally, our recommendation is a simple receive-and-file for this 2017 annual report. We will, with your direction, submit this report to OPR and State HCD. And finally, a direction to proceed with implementing the general plan, including all those projects that are outlined in the work program. I summarized them here, much more detail in the staff report itself.
Well, thank you for your report. Any further questions for Todd? Seeing none, I don't have anyone from the audience signed up to speak, so thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Is there any other business, Madam Clerk?
No.
Okay.
Nothing on my end.
I do have two adjournments. Does anyone else have something?
Madam Chair, I just have one county executive comment.
Oh, yeah, sure.
I wanted to let the Board know that we were successful in getting our bond rating upgraded by one of our bond firms.
That's great.
And when I came to the county in 2007, Supervisor Peters challenged me to get an upgrade. We went the wrong way there for a while, but we did. What the strength states indicated for the county is that strong economy with access to broad and diverse metropolitan statistical area, strong management with good financial policies and practice, and strong budgetary performance. The weakness that they continue to spotlight for us, and we've discussed this, is that weak budgetary flexibility, and that's something that we've been working with the Board on how we can get more flexibility in it. And also, our debt position is very high and high bond debt, which leads them to make comments on weak debt and contingent liability. Contingent liability component in here is our workers' comp and general liability. We are not adequately funded in there. But overall, they were very pleased with how the county ended fiscal 2017, and they said that the county has improved, and I do want to give credit where credit is due. The county, we have a fund balance policy that we adopted in May of 2016, and that's one of the items that they spotlight, is that we are putting money back into our fund balance slowly, but that is a positive that they gave us. So I wanted to thank the Board. And the other person that has worked tirelessly with me on this is Kristen Yates, she's in the back. I just wanted to publicly acknowledge her hard work on this, too.
Congratulations, Kristen.
Thanks.
Thank you for your hard work. Phil, did you have something else you wanted to say?
Yeah, under member comments, I wanted to just briefly note that I had a conversation with our county executive and our assistant county executive this afternoon. I've also shared conversations with Supervisor Natoli about an issue that maybe others on this Board feel similarly, and that is kind of our standardized practice of auditing various nonprofit community members that are engaged on various community initiatives. And I don't know about the others, but I'm hearing from the likes of a handful of folks that feel that they're being treated differently, and I think, given the volume of calls and requests for meetings and general frustration that's certainly been expressed in my office about it, I've asked the county executive to consider coming...
about it, I've asked the county executive to consider coming back in open session to give us an overview of how the county is implementing a standardized practice of how we treat various nonprofit agencies that attempt to partner with us on such things as the Black Child Legacy Campaign and our overall continuum of care for homelessness. So that's something that I believe the county executive is receptive to and would look forward to hearing back, maybe is, what, early as middle of April?
That's correct.
Okay.
If I could, just on that note, one of the work plan items I've had is the Internal Audit Committee, which we've been working through our internal audit. When the recession hit, a lot of our audit components were taken out, and we have been going back into our contracts and starting the audit process, and I think it's timely for us to have that conversation on what it really means when we do an audit and what the standard forms are, findings, management responses, and we can absolutely come back middle of April for that.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Anything else? Okay, thank you. I do have two adjournments today. First, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Ann McHenry, our area lost a noted art connoisseur and a true one-of-a-kind memorable character with the passing of Ann this month. She and her husband, Dr. Malcolm McHenry, settled in Sacramento in 1965 when he began his medical practice here, and she devoted her outgoing skills to fundraising and philanthropy for a wide range of arts and animal rescue organizations, including the Crocker Art Museum, serving in a variety of capacities, including president of the Board of Trustees. Her style was legendary. At one museum board meeting, a long-winded board member was describing his dreams for the museum, and Ann cut him short, propositioning him to, "Show me your checkbook and I'll listen to your dreams." And on another occasion, she appeared before the city council in Sacramento soliciting funds for the Crocker, dressed in a black leather outfit, explaining, "They were expecting an old lady in hat and gloves, and instead, they got me." So needless to say, she was very successful in cracking the whip for the museum's benefit. She was instrumental in bringing the exhibit of the art of the mamelukes to the Crocker in 1983, which led to the museum adopting a more globally-oriented exhibition policy. And she and her husband traveled extensively, visiting every continent except Antarctica and South America, and during many of those travels, brought back numerous works of art, many of which have been donated to the Crocker. She was a gifted hostess, which I can say her dinner parties were legendary, and a charming personality and a powerful force for good, for enriching our community, and I think it's fitting that today that we honor her by adjourning in her memory. The other adjournment I have today is in memory of Russ Solomon. The lyrics in the song "American Pie," recall the day the music died, and it felt like that when we learned the founder of Tower Records, Russ Solomon, passed away this month. I think we can all recall going to Tower Records on Watt Avenue to browse through albums and listen to our favorite songs. It was the ritual of being a teenager before the internet. And we all know the story of his success, selling U-78s and 45s out of his father's drugstore near the Tower Theater. For those of you too young to know, those were actually kinds of records. Then branching out, having standalone record stores, resulting in global business empire of about 200 stores. Not bad for a kid from Sacramento. His stores not only attracted kids and music aficionados, but celebrity musicians and rock stars like Elton John and Bruce Springsteen. He was also a prominent art collector, purchasing the works of many local artists. As you'll recall, his stores had no dress code. Clerks could have wild hair and clothes, and he followed what he called the Tom Sawyer School of Management, giving employees the tools and letting them figure out how to run the stores. And it worked, as music transformed from 78s to 45s to 33 RPM to cassettes and compact discs, but it all stopped due to competition of free music off the internet. And while Tower Records may have passed, Russ Solomon remained a legend. A few years ago, he visited Japan, where 78 Tower stores still operate under Japanese ownership, and the employees greeted him as a hero. For many of us, he was our music man. I'd like the board to adjourn today in the memory of Russ Solomon.
Don't forget the eight-track tapes.
Yeah, do you still have some of those, Todd?
Yeah, I still do. If there's something to play them, I can share them with you, so...
Yeah, and all mine are broken. So, I'd like to adjourn today in memory of Ann Henry, McHenry and Russ Solomon. So this meeting is adjourned.